I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for its regular May 9 meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Anton.
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Richard.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you standing, please, anybody and everybody that intends to give any testimony this evening on any item, you have to be sworn in. So if you'll please follow me, I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Thank you very much. I would ask that you would please silence any and all electronic equipment. We do not have the minutes of our April 11 meeting, so we will pass on that. Under open hearings, new business, planning and zoning 12-016. Joseph Yvonne representing Dima S.G., regarding the property located at 224 Willard Place for the following. A zoning code variance request to allow the construction of an addition on a lot of substandard width in the R3 Single Family Detached District. And Item B, zoning code variance request to allow an addition on a lot of substandard area in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. Staff has something for us?
Yes, the applicant has asked staff to continue the case while they're deciding what they want to do with the plans. The commission may remember that last year, 224 Willard requested a variation. Since then, the owner asked the architect to make substantial changes to the plans, requiring a new variation, which is why this was going to be on the agenda. Last week, the owner asked the architect to change the plans yet again, which would have resulted in another variation. And because of that, the architect is likely going to go back to the original plans to save time and money, so we'll be able to update you next month to let you know for sure what they're going to do.
Okay, then, I think just to make an official motion to approve to next month?
Motion to approve continuance.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda, planning and zoning Item 12-017. Onafoot Corporate Identification Solutions for Circle K Shell regarding the property located at 609 North Cass for the following. A, zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs. B, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage. Please, if you would?
Hi, Onafoot Corporate Identification Solutions. I'm here on the new Circle K Shell that is on Ogden, I believe. It's right there. It previously was a Jewel Express location. Currently, Circle K and Shell has taken over the Jewel Express, with Shell being responsible for the gasoline, and Circle K for the food mart and the car wash station at the facility. We're requesting a variance to increase the number of signs and the assigned area coverage there in order to identify the different services and responsibilities at the location. Do I just put this here? I don't know where it comes up, but...
You'll see it. It'll come.
All right, there we go. We would like to reface the monument signs so that it can hold the Shell Peckton, Circle K logo, and the Home Run-In pizza faces, all as identification signs for the site. We would like to reface the tenant panel that is currently the Jewel Express so that it shows both the Circle K and the Shell logo. We would like to add three Shell Pecktons to the gas station in order to identify the gasoline station to both the consumers at the Jewel parking lot on Ogden Avenue and then the other street that's going there that way you can see the logo from all visible areas of traffic. And finally, add the Circle K logo to the building to identify the food mart as being Circle K's responsibility, and then also requesting the spanner board that is used for advertisement.
All right, I believe if I've read everything correctly, you're asking for one more sign than what they have now?
Yes, I believe it's the additional Peckton on the canopy, correct?
No, it's the spanner board on...
Oh, the spanner board, the spanner board.
Spanner board, okay. Does anybody from the public have any comment on this, either for or against? Okay, we're going to close the public comment. Let's start with staff, if you have anything to enlighten us.
Sure. Other than the spanner board, the applicant is not requesting more than what's existing at the site. The applicant has started to cover up the existing signs so that they can do the new signage program, and staff doesn't have any additional concerns other than removing the architectural awning and putting up this spanner board. The architectural awning was approved as part of the plan development and the facade, and so staff would recommend leaving that as it exists.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Pill, if you would.
What is the purpose of this spanner board?
It is mainly for advertisement. There has been one or two municipalities that have... It would change based on like, you know, if Polar Pop is on sale or if there's a food item on sale. There has been a couple municipalities that have requested it to be like a standard, whether you just want the advertisement of the verbiage Polar Pop. It's one of the larger profit items for Circle K, so they try to put out the Polar Pop advertisement at the bare minimum whenever they can on the building and/or on freestanding signs.
Is it mainly letters, scrolling type letters, or does it also have graphic?
There's no scrolling letters, there's no graphics. It's static advertisement, so it would be more or less on a coroplast insert that would just go inside the spanner board.
Oh, I see, I see, okay. And if I may ask a question of staff, is it the keeping of the awning that is desirable, or is it prohibiting the spanner board?
It's primarily changing the architectural features of the property as it was originally designed. The plan development features were done at the same time that the Jewel site had the overall improvement several years ago.
Uh huh.
And there are some other opportunities for some temporary messages to be displayed through paper, paper-like window signs. So it's not that we're opposed to you presenting that message, it's more a function of trying to maintain the integrity of the original design now that there's been an ownership change.
And I understand that. I think there has been, I think, one other place where we've had to keep the awning, but one of the reasons that Circle K has kind of moved away from keeping the awnings at this location is we're doing a conversion of about 21 sites, and at least 75% of the Jewel Express sites has had the same awning. So they're kind of considering it more of an emblem of Jewel Express identification as opposed to whether or not it's an architectural piece of the property.
Now, that's not the awning though, right?
You can see it on the bottom picture to the right. All of the awnings are pretty much the same, the one over the entrance.
She had a better picture.
Yeah, you can see it on the... If you look here, I mean, it's... I don't know if you can zoom in at all, but like, the awning is right underneath the current Jewel Express, right there, over the entryway on the food mart area.
And is the... Does the awning have to leave in order to put the spanner board up?
In order to fit the spanner board, yes, it does. The Circle K building sign can go there with the awning staying there, and as I previously mentioned, one of the reasons they have been going towards removing the awnings is it is an emblem that is on like 75% of the Jewel Express stations, and in Circle K's mind, it becomes kind of like a branding for Jewel Express as opposed to being an architectural addition of the locations themselves.
With that thought process in mind, we'd probably have to remove awnings from most of the buildings in this town.
Understandable.
Obviously, I'm not sure there's a direct correlation there, other than in their minds, which is because they want a spanner board.
The only correlation would be that, and obviously, I don't have all the sites here, but we are converting about 21 sites throughout Illinois right now, and a good percentage of them, if the face of the building was brick like this, they all have awnings at the Jewel Express stations, which is why it was basically looked at Circle K as being part of the Jewel branding, considering that, you know, based on the building of the Jewel Express stations that Jewel made, they added this specific awning, so it's not just in Westmont, but throughout Illinois.
Well, and doesn't an awning serve a nice purpose for the customers too, in Chicago weather? Particularly if you're hoping that people will be courteous and stand a moment and hold a door for someone coming in or out with their arms loaded or something like that. Removal of such an awning, I would think would certainly... We have so many things that are discourteous in society today, that's certainly one small step for keeping some weather off of people in an area that has four-season weather and things like that. I have no problem with your signage package as a whole. I'm very pro-business on the signs and things like that, and I hope we have a lot of luck there. I'm going to refrain my comment yet on the spanner board awning thing till I've heard the rest of the commissioner speak, but as far as the rest of it is concerned, I would support all of that.
Well, and as for the awning, if it was something that would not allow the rest of the proposal to go forward, we do have one other site where we did keep the awning just basically for the village requirements, and the Circle K building sign does fit there if that ends up being what the board decides to do.
There's probably other ways to do it, either through some type of signage or something in the window or something like that to convey the same message, I would think could be done also.
In quite possibly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anton?
I don't have a problem with the spanner board at all. I think when there's three uses, if the building has three people in it, you're going to have situations with the signage, so I don't have a problem with the package at all.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I don't either.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Well, I like the way that awning looks, and... But I'd like to see you put up a spanner board, but if it doesn't fit there, what else can you do to put up a board somewhere else on the building? Just curiosity.
As for the front of the building, I don't know where else we would be able to put it. And some of the problem with putting the spanner board in another spot other than where we have it, where the awning is at this location, actually was just there, like, when I came here, is that that Home Run-In is right next to it. I don't know how crowding... If you move it over to that middle section, and Circle K advertisements are misled or giving the misrepresentation to consumers coming in that it's Home Run-In's advertisement over versus Circle K, which directly on this site, the spanner board would do best directly underneath the sign, just for the... Being able to identify where the sale is going on or where you can find the product.
Yeah, the reason I mention it is because Speedway, throughout some of their stations, they have a smaller board that's kind of lower, and they do the same thing. I mean, they put up their sales. It's about three foot by five foot.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if there was another place on the building in the front that you could do that?
I'm not really sure. Like, when you go right outside of the Circle K, there is the red box, and then I want to say it's an ice machine, something right there. On the other side, there's a very small area of brick from what I was just right there. And looking at the connection between the two, once you get past the red box and the ice machine, it's kind of... Ends up being on the pizza area.
It does.
All right. That was my only concern. Thanks.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, I sort of lament the idea of losing the awning. It sort of keeps with the sort of motif throughout businesses in Westmont. Again, I'm looking at possibly another place to put that information, someone walking in, more at eye level or so. That's all I have. If you would like to respond, is...
Oh, once again, the spanner board, I don't know that, like I said, there would be another way to advertise it without it clouding the pizza place that's right next to it, and would hate to like cause problems with that through consumers. And I'm not quite sure, but I know that Circle K is still working on possibly trying to identify the car wash that's right next to it, so I don't know if that's going to be happening or not throughout Illinois right now. And if it were, the only other place would be on the side of that building, but it happens to be the car wash that's right there.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Passing on.
Commissioner Thomas?
How near is the... Another Circle... Circle K Shell? You're saying that, you know, the logos, as far as the spanner board and that, is almost like, you know, known for this combination of businesses that you have there?
The Circle K Shells?
Yeah.
There's multiple... I'm not quite sure how close the next one is, but the Circle K Shell branding has been going on for about the past three years. We've branded about 64 sites that were not Jewel Express stations, but actual, like, just Shell stations that became Shell Circle K. And in... Within the last conversion we've been doing, there's 21 sites that have now gone over to Circle K Shell. There's Oswego, Bartlett, you throughout, like, going all the way down to Manuka, up to Crystal Lake.
Now, what is on this spanner board?
It would be a post for advertisement.
And it just slides in, or is it electronic, or...
It does just slide in. If it were an issue that it could fluctuate in the sales, one of the propositions that Circle K poses is to make it like a static, just Polar Pop advertisement.
Okay. Well, I don't have any problem at all with your other signs and the shell on each side so that your customers know where that you're there.
Mm-hmm.
I have no problem there. I do like the awning, and I think I will vote away so that the trustees know that there was a difference of opinion and that we're split on the awning, and like you said, it's not a deal breaker or anything, but...
Yes, the rest of the package, I mean, it's more important.
There is concerns about the awning, and I do like the way it looks, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if you would, on the spanner board, you said that's to be fixed, but it will be LED illuminated?
It's not even illuminated, it's just an advertisement that slides in. It's literally a metal panel in the background with, I don't know, kind of like hinges that you can just slide in a coroplast advertisement. And if there were to be a change in that advertisement a couple months down the road or whatever, slide that out and put a new one in. So it's a non-illuminated signage.
Physically has to do that?
Correct. It's pretty simple.
Well, then, I would question as to why. I'm fully in favor of retaining the awning, to be quite frank with you, for the aesthetics of the site plan. But I would question that what you're really talking about is a holder for a sheet of plastic.
Yeah.
Which obviously, in my mind, could be affixed right to the existing awning.
If you affix it to the existing awning, you would ruin the awning.
I'm sorry?
You would ruin the awning. So the awning material that's put on there, in order for it to... It's umbrella material, so in order for it to resist weather and do all these other things, rather... The only thing that you can really do on an awning, for the most part, is screen print on it. If you go into actually attaching a metal hanging, and that you're going to end up ruining the awning and having to replace it probably within a year. It'll wear, it'll pull, it won't keep the water in. So if you're going to keep the awning, the spanner board...
I would surely think that a company as large as Circle K could get a very enlightened sign company that could make something that would last a little longer for you. I have a question for staff now. We got a request for two variances. Number of allowable signs that pertains to the spanner board. Maximum gross square footage you want to increase, is that also the spanner board?
Yes, the total square footage includes the spanner board, so the commission could leave it in or out.
Okay, very good. Any further comments by... Okay, since we have a zoning vote... A variance request we need reading, so the findings affect, if we could have them, please.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. Existing signage on the property for the previous user exceeded code requirements. Applicant seeks to rebrand the property pursuant to the branding requirements of the various corporate users of the property in order to maintain an adequate street presence at this busy commercial intersection. Due to the fact that there are three users of this property, the applicant cannot adequately identify these users and yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. This property is unique in that there are three separate users occupying a relatively small building on the property. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed signage is not dissimilar from signage which previously existed on the property and is not out of character with the heavily commercial Ogden Avenue corridor where the property is located.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings affect for a zoning code variance request to increase the number of signage are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning Item 12-017, Item A, the zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
If theoretically I did not support the awning, or...
The spanner board.
The spanner board, not one of the awning there. I would vote no on both of these, as far as square footage, because the spanner board is involved in this overall square footage, and the number of signs, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, as a continuation of that, so if the motion passes with the recommendation, it's finished. If the motion didn't, could one of us then resubmit a motion for the same thing minus the spanner board?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Pill, I was considering adding an alternate, perhaps an Item B, to increase the number of allowable signage pursuant to the affixing of the spanner board to the existing awning.
I didn't know if it was dependent really on how the original vote goes, though.
Ann Marie, could you help us?
Yeah, I think we should probably vote on the original first and see whether that passes or not.
All right. Any further questions? May we have a roll call, please? Again, to... This is to increase the number of allowable signs by taking down the awning and putting a spanner board up. Everybody clear on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
No.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
No.
And Chairman Richard?
No.
What do we got?
Four to three?
Three to four.
Three and four.
Right, and it fails, right.
So it fails. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Item A's zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs pursuant to affixing of the spanner board to the existing awning.
I would have a problem with that because you're putting a condition on there that may not be plausible.
I agree. We're almost telling them how to do their business.
It's their choice what to do, I think, at this point.
How about keep the awning and then go from there? Because then they can put it anywhere they want. We agreed to another sign already.
Okay.
Saying they have to pursue it, then keeping the awning.
Then the motion would fail for lack of a motion and a second. Okay, so, we have turned that one down, now we have a variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage. If we could have reading of the findings affect, please.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. Existing signage on the property for the previous user exceeded code requirements. Applicant seeks to rebrand the property pursuant to the branding requirements of the various corporate users of the property in order to maintain an adequate street presence at this busy commercial intersection. Due to the fact that there are three users of this property, the applicant cannot adequately identify these users and yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. This property is unique in that there are three separate users occupying a relatively small building on the property. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed signage is not dissimilar from signage which previously existed on the property and is not out of character with the heavily commercial Ogden Avenue corridor where the property is located.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. Everybody is in agreement except Chairman Richards, who is not in agreement with that. Okay, so the findings affect for an increase in the maximum gross square footage are hereby My note vote, I would just like it on the record to show that I disagree with the findings of fact under Item... Item one, that I do not believe that a number of users would deny the applicant to make a profit, since we're only talking of spanner board, nothing to identify who is selling what. So that explains my note vote. So I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item B, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fidesco?
No.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
No.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco? Did I ask her?
Yes, I said no.
Yeah, okay. And Chairman Richard?
Yes. I'm sorry, no, no. No, no, no.
Four, motion fails.
Motion fails.
Yeah, but...
I...
I have a question. There are two concerns here. Number one is some people would like to keep the awning.
Yes.
I don't think it's any of business of this board to tell somebody to keep the awning or not to keep the awning. We're talking about signage here.
Right, so what if we have a motion? What if I were to propose a motion to accept the package as presented to us with the exception of the removal of the awning?
That would be... Okay.
Now, if they can make the spanner board work with it, in that location, affixed to the left, to the right?
Something different.
They can work through the village to go ahead and work with that.
But we're still asking them to remove an awning.
No, we're telling you, no, we have to.
I mean, to retain an awning that they'd rather not have. We're talking about signs, not awnings. Now, if the sign is on the awning, then it's... But right now...
We're asking... They're asking to change a plan.
They're asking to change the original site plan, which we approved.
That's the issue.
The awning part of that site plan, I guess.
The architecture is reviewed as part of the site plan.
I'm with you, Wally, but I think that they should... We should give them the okay for the extra sign, extra square footage, and how they do it. They need to do it tastefully, tactfully, not tear a building up and tear the awning off. I get it now, what they're looking for.
But we have a problem with our own ordinance here in that a spanner board is not allowed, so they have to have a variance for the spanner board, so then you would allow them the square footage and the number of signs, and then give them the...
Basically, the package as proposed, without the demise of the awning.
There you go. I would enter a motion. I would accept a motion. Greg, you making a motion?
I am, so moved.
Okay.
And I'm seconding.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco.
Can we repeat the motion?
Please, just for clarity.
Motion to accept the package as presented to us regarding signage from Circle K Shell, with the exception of the demise of the awning as its part of the site plan.
It's been seconded?
Yes. Any further questions on the motion? May we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Planning and zoning item 12-018. Ellen Morris of Lagesty Mulder with Virginia Peril regarding the property located at 105 East Ogden for the following. A, a special use permit request to operate a pet shop in the B2 general business district. B, zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a pet store building, which will encroach into the required 100-foot required separation from a residence district. Eighty-seven feet of separation is shown where code requires 100 feet of separation as a special condition for a special use permit. Item C, zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs from one to two. Item D, site and landscaping plan approval. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Ellen Morris from Lagesty Mulder. I have with me Virginia Peril, the owner of Pet Supplies Plus. She's been a merchant in Westmont since 1994, operating on Ogden Avenue just west of Cass. She desires to develop and own her own building instead of being a tenant in the current building that she's at, and has the property under contract, and desires these special use and variances in order to allow her business to continue to grow and prosper in Westmont.
Would you allude to the zoning code variance request for the, for the variance for the 100-foot separation?
Yes.
What is your specific hardship?
The, we need, in order for the, the building to be profitable for the amount of square footage she does, she needs to run the business, we had to get up to a certain square footage that required that we reduce the rear yard requirement, which is only a requirement because of the special use permit requirement. So we're in compliance if it not required a special use permit, and this gives, this still affords her the ability to get delivery trucks into the back without causing hardship to the through lanes on Ogden Avenue. So we've maintained serviceability on the site. The separation, the visual separation between the proposed business and the residences to the south is mitigated by a six-foot fence, which is in compliance with the ordinance. So we've endeavored to try to be sensitive to the issue of separation while still only grabbing the smallest amount of, of reduction in that rear yard requirement that we possibly can. We've demonstrated that, that truck turning movements to staff so that they could concur that, that we, we've been proper in that, in that due diligence.
And for your building, it would not be possible for you to encroach into the front yard setback, your...
Oh, that's, that's more problematic because you've got the, the Ogden Avenue setback requirements tied back into IDOT governor, governance, that, that, we, we, there was no place else to turn except for the rear yard.
Literally caught between a rock and a hard place.
Yes, sir.
Okay, verified. Is anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public comment. Does staff have anything?
Yes, we've been working consistently with the applicant over the past several months to update the plans. The new plans reflect comments from planning, engineering, public works. We're very pleased with the additional landscaping, the sign upgrades, and the general appearance of the architecture, and we're glad that the applicant is excited to improve her business and remain in Westmont.
Okay, very fine. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you would.
You said going south, you're going to have a six-foot fence?
Along the back property line.
Is it, is it six-foot fence already there from when the car wash was, is, is there, or you're, it's part of your plan to add?
Part of our plan.
To add it?
Yes.
Okay, so, so when it, when it was a car wash, and there were a lot of cars going in and out, there was no fence there?
You know, I'm going...
It looks like there is an existing fence there, but this will be a new fence as part of the redevelopment.
Okay, all right.
And unlike the car wash, there will not be a lot of nighttime headlight traffic, even with the, with the screening of the fence, because it's predominantly a service area in the back of, of the, of the building, where customer parking is along the side and in the front.
I like the, the look of the building, and it's a good place. You have a business that is no longer functioning there on, on a main artery of our village, and I'll welcome you here.
Thank you.
To continue here, not new.
Commissioner Fleet? Oops, I'm sorry.
All I got.
Okay, Commissioner Fleet?
Tell me about the, the types of delivery trucks, size, since there's only one, one curb cut with your, with the current plan. How do you plan on getting in and out and...
The, the, the truck turning radius studies that we've done, first off, the truck is, the largest truck is a semi-trailer truck, 45 feet in length, not the over-the-road 60 to 65 feet in length semi-trailer trucks. And it will be a direct-in, drive down to the back of the site, and then through three turning maneuvers, they're able to get the rear of the trailer to the rear door for service. And having once done that, then they're pulling straight back out and on to, through the, through the driveway. The driveway is really a condens, you know, a condensing of driveways from an existing two down to a single driveway, which is consistent with IDOT's concern for, for a reduction of those kinds of hazards that multiple driveways present. So we're, we're, we're satisfied as the user that, that we consider that, that issue.
Okay. Will there be a sign here directing traffic, right turn only out of this, of this lot?
No, there, because there will be some right-of-way work, IDOT will weigh in on that, but at this point in time, there is no restriction.
And there's a, there's a center turn lane there?
Yeah.
That you can go and collect in there while, before interrupting the traffic that's, that's going.
Okay. No further questions. It's a great-looking building, and be happy to shop there.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, the, just wanted to point out, the existing building is, is considerably closer than the proposed building to the properties that's behind it, so, you know, it's not going to make a difference. I mean, it's going to actually be better for the residents. The other thing is, I really like the building, the exterior, and the awning, by the way.
Oh, had to go there.
I'm just, you know, it's rather obvious on this building. But I wish you luck, you know.
And that's it. Commissioner Van Buren?
I have been reading through the material and going and looking at the site, and I understand that you've been working closely with our planning department and that you have been very cooperative, and I'm glad to hear that, and I would wish you luck.
Commissioner Anton?
Happy you're staying. My dog Bailey and I go to your store all the time.
[laughing].
And we will, and we keep those little long chew sticks she loves, and so we come all the time, so I'm glad you're staying. I'm sad to see my car wash go, but as Commissioner Fidesco said, the other building is really close. I mean, you can't even get a car around the edge, just one turn there, so this, this will be a lot better than, for the residents, and I like the drawings, looks really good. Good luck with it. I'll see you there.
Commissioner Pill?
I too think it's an improvement to the Ogden Avenue corridor. I do have a couple of questions. First off, on the, the preliminary engineering plan drawing, is that indicating underground storage of water?
Yes, the, the site is about one acre in size, and if we're going to be in full compliance with the ordinance, which we are, it necessitates us having to store water under the parking lot through a system called storm trap, which is basically a pre-cast concrete chamber that is buried underground, backfilled structurally, and then the paving takes place over it.
Do you have to have any above-ground storage also?
There will be some above-ground storage that we're asking our civil engineer to further study as a way of reducing the size of the storm trap facility. The storm trap is a very expensive solution. It's about $240,000 just for the concrete chambers by itself, so anything we can do to reduce that. But it's, it's really a challenge of that corridor on Ogden Avenue being, being so shallow, and a desire to get to some retail square footage standards that necessitates that expensive solution, which Virginia has been well appraised of, and we're working actively to try to make it a reasonable premium for that site.
Could you tell me a little bit more detail than we have in our current package, the makeup and composition of the fence that will be in the back and buffering to the neighbors to the south?
I am going to tell you, I'm, I'm a little weak as to what that material should be, and we would just propose that we continue to work with staff to get to a reasonable solution. If there's some stipulation or guidance that this board would like to provide, we'd certainly respect that and, and work to get that incorporated into our construction documents.
I don't certainly speak for the other commissioners, but I know that fence materials over the last decade or two have come a long way. There's many more types than just the, you buy the six-foot section, you throw it up there, three years later, it looks fair, six years later, it looks terrible. So there's all kinds of, of materials that have 20- to 50-year lifespans and look much more decorative. There's also board on board, and there's board on both sides. There's, there's a lot of different things, and I think it's always nice when you're going to go up against a residential neighborhood that we make it look nice. So I would encourage staff to coordinate and work with them in that area.
Thank you.
One last one, if you could put up on the drawing, on the overhead for me, the delivery truck exhibit?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just curious, I'm not sure I follow how this was drawn. Is this drawn to show us the three-turn maneuver you mentioned?
Yes. This demonstrates that a truck pulling in from Ogden Avenue can pull in, and then it doesn't show the three-turning...
It does on another drawing. We, we did have a drawing that showed it.
Yeah, drawing that shows.
Oh, there it is.
It's on the same document. So we had them test that in three maneuvers, they could get the truck back in position to be able to serve the back, and then once from there, it's a, it's a straight pull-out onto Ogden Avenue.
So I got the straight pull-out part.
Yeah.
I just didn't quite see how that, how this diagram works in conjunction with this diagram. It just didn't seem like it worked, but you're, I mean, it's going to be your delivery trucks, and it's going to be your parking lot that's torn up.
They're just drivers, who cares?
By it, but, because that truck is actually going the wrong way, the one that's down in there right now.
In all truthfulness, it, it could have been oriented so it's an exact application to this.
Mm-hmm. But you're saying it's going to work, because I, and I'm not a truck driver, but I don't understand the angles of how that, how this works on that. Did anyone else have a problem with that? You understood that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Semi-trucks, they, they can turn and literally spin from the tractor.
I understand that, I just don't see how the three, this is three turns, the left one.
Now they have like an alley, there's no, you gotta...
Okay. I also, again, and just to, to reiterate what some of the other commissioners said, it's a beautiful-looking building. I like the drawing, I like the concept, and a great location, and I think that's a nice, there's certainly a lot of traffic, and I don't think any of your current customers are inconvenienced, you're just offsetting to the other side of Cass by almost an equidistant amount, so I wish you luck with it.
No further questions. Thank you. May I ask as to the hours of operation? Hours of operation?
Stores are operated. We have nine to nine from Monday to Saturday, nine to nine, nine in the morning till nine in the evening, and then Sunday we operate from 10 to 6:00. So Sundays our hours are more limited.
I did have one question. You're talking about a possible cut through to the property to the east of you on the parking lots?
We're making ourselves open for that eventuality.
I understand that.
And so we indicated that on the drawing as a willingness on the applicant's part to continue to stay open to that. There could be some, some advantages, just not only to the community, but also to the way in which our business might work with an adjacency.
And I agree with this, and I applaud you on it. The only question I had, if that does come to pass, you've got that 12-inch tree that you're planting right in the middle of that proposed throughcut, I think maybe you might just move that in anticipation of that?
I think that we'll study that as we refine the engineering drawings and try to anticipate. The, the, the truth is...
It'd be a shame to dig it up twice.
I agree with you, and the truth is that no matter what we anticipate, it's going to be highly dependent upon what the adjacent new property owner would, would want to negotiate with us.
And I couldn't find anything to my satisfaction, the illumine, illumination area. Are you going to be heavily illuminating the back parking area?
The, we did do a photometric, and generally speaking, the, the foot candles in the pedestrian, in the car parking area is in the one-to-one and a half-foot, foot candle. We've got a little bit of an edge condition that staff has appropriately identified in our submittal, that we've got it down to zero in about 75% of the property line, close to the fixture, it's, it is bleeding out, and so we just, we need to work harder with the, with the light fixture manufacturer in order to get those cutoff shields to work a little bit more effectively.
Yeah, it looks like you're going to have it in the southwest and the southeast corner of the parking lot adjacent to the residential?
Yes, but, but...
But facing north.
Right, but projecting north.
Yeah.
All right, and then we do have one on the, on the west property line, which is the problematic one relative to the spill across, past the property line.
Perhaps if they could be lowered just a touch and aim better, it might...
That's a, that's an excellent suggestion, and one of the ones that we'll be following with, with the lighting engineer.
I'd hate to destroy the residence' nightscape.
Yeah.
And I would echo my fellow commissioners' sentiments that it looks like you've designed an exceptionally pretty building, and I'm very happy to see you take over that property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask additional question that I had that I forgot?
Wish we could talk about that.
This, the new facility looks to be bigger than your previous or your, your current facility. Are you planning on expanding product lines or carrying live pets?
We will be carrying some live pets on a limited basis. It will be like a small, there'll be fish and some reptiles, small, small, very small. And we don't carry that now, but my franchisor is wanting to make some changes in the newer stores, which, of which mine is one, so he is suggesting that we put a small area for fish and small animal facilities, and a little bit of birds, on a limited basis.
More than likely not dogs and cats?
Oh, no, 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 we're not going to involve with that. No, thank you. No, no dogs or cats, it's just very limited, small animals. And they feel that with the, well, we're always watching and doing research on companies that are successful in this business, and they've noted that recently we are adding this to some of the newer stores because we feel that it improves our sales in the small animal aisles for products. And as far as adding new company lines for different products, we are doing this all the time.
Sure.
We, we have, at the present time, we have over 120 products that we are eliminating that, if, for example, if we find a product that is not selling, we will eliminate that product after X number of months or years or whatever, because we don't want to keep anything on that's not selling. That's why we're successful. We want to make sure the products are constantly rotated and we get better ones that will sell. If that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, may we have the readings of the findings of fact for a special use permit, please?
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. This retail store use is consistent with other retail stores in the immediate area. All operations will be completely enclosed, and this use will not generate adverse light, noise, traffic, or odors. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. This retail store use is consistent with other retail stores in the immediate area. All operations will be completely enclosed, and this use will not generate adverse light, noise, traffic, or odors. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. This retail store will not adversely affect surrounding properties or impair property values in the area as this use is consistent with surrounding retail uses. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Surrounding properties are fully developed with similar commercial uses, and this property use, proposed use, will not impact any future redevelopment of such properties. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property was previously improved and is serviced by all necessary utilities, accessways, et cetera. The applicant will maintain one point of access onto Ogden Avenue and will comply with the requirements of DuPage County, the DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The applicant will maintain one access point onto Ogden Avenue where currently two exist, thereby minimizing vehicular conflicts. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. The proposed use will conform to all performance standards and will be completely enclosed. The applicant is seeking a variance from the supplemental setback requirement and the sign requirements of the zoning code.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Planning and Zoning, Item 12018. Item eight, special use permit, request to operate a pet shop in the B2 General Business District.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on a motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard? Yes. Okay, may we have readings of the findings of fact for a zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a pet store building which will encroach into the required 100-foot required separation from a residence district?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The proposed building is located 96 feet from the adjacent residential district and 100 feet of separations required by code. Applicant has designed the building and parking in a manner to provide the maximum separation possible while meeting all other code requirements for setbacks in parking. Most other allowable commercial uses for this property would not require this 100-foot setback. Criteria number two, the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances. The applicant's proposing to mitigate this variance through the construction of a six-foot fence and landscaping along the property line. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed setback is consistent with the setbacks of other buildings in the immediate area, is mitigated by the construction of six-foot fence and landscaping, and granting this variance will not alter the essential character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a zoning code variance request are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item B, the zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a pet store building which will encroach into the required 100, into the required 100-foot separation from a residence district.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on a motion, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Fidesco?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fleet, sorry.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, may we have readings of the findings of fact for an increase in the number of allowable signs from one to two?
The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The applicant proposes a wall sign and a monument sign to adequately identify and brand its store along a busy commercial corridor. This total signage meets the sign area requirements of code and is consistent with signage in the immediately surrounding area. Criteria number two, the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances. The proposed total signage is less than the allowable sign area for the property. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed two signs are consistent with other signage of commercial buildings along Ogden Avenue and will not adversely affect the surrounding area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. The findings of fact for a variance request to increase the number of allowable signs from one to two are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item C, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs from one to two.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on a motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, item D, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Site and Landscaping Plan Approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on a motion, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for, and staff can tell you when to go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole.
We just wanted to thank the effort of the Commission, and want to let all of you Commissioners know how much we appreciate the good work of the staff. It's been a very good relationship this last three months, and not a problem has arisen that we couldn't work on it together, so thank you very much.
I don't know if you're a chamber member, but it'd be nice to think about membership in the chamber.
I would personally like to thank you for choosing to stay in the Village of Westmont. Thank you very much. I've never met so many nice people like I have in my, in Westmont, my customers. I have two stores, one in Wheaton and one in Westmont, and I have chosen the two best suburbs out of Chicago that you could ever dream, I was so lucky. If you will believe this story, but if I have a check that bounces, and you know, every store does, you have a check that there's no funds in the account, I have personally had the police department from both of these cities come and bring me cash in the hand. I mean, talk about unusual, that is really, I mean, they consider every kind of a bad thing that happens and they try to fix it. I mean, this is very commendable, and I really appreciate it. And I can't say enough for Shannon and Jill and my builder here. Everything's turning out real well, and I hope to see everybody in my store.
Thank you.
I was there Sunday.
Okay, Planning and Zoning, Item 12-019. Village of Westmont with Common Ed regarding the property located at 389 North Cass for the following. A, zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a 10-foot-tall solid fence in the front yard and side yard adjoining a street in the R4 General Residence District. Code permits three-foot open fences in the front yard and side yard adjoining a street, and six-foot solid fences in the interior side and rear yard. I'm told that staff will present for Commonwealth Edison?
Unfortunately, the petitioner, the co-petitioner really, Jackie Finch, with the utilities, unable to be present this evening, and Jill Ziegler's prepared to make a presentation if the Commission is all right with that.
We'll go easy on you.
Okay. Okay. As Shannon mentioned, unfortunately, Common Ed was unable to be here tonight, so staff is presenting the application for the fence variation. Staff has received numerous complaints about the appearance of the poles in the front and side yard of the existing Common Ed property in front of the substation, and as a result of this, asked that Common Ed present a continuation of the existing fence, which you can see in the picture, and that, to continue the fence to be 10 feet and cedar. This requires a variation because fences of this height are not permitted in the front yard. As you can tell in the pictures, the fence would not adequately screen the entire poles, but it would be a cohesive appearance to continue the fence in this manner, and it would screen the majority of the poles from the street, from the street view. I've met with Joe, one of the neighbors, he's in the audience and is prepared to address some concerns with the Commission tonight, and the, one of the questions he had was what the purpose of the poles are, and Common Ed responded that the new poles were added to provide some additional switches. This is to decrease the number of power outages to customers in the area. They said that twice in 2009, several hundred customers in the neighborhood lost all the power at the same time, and so with the additional switches, hopefully that will decrease. I'm available for any questions.
I'd just like to add the comment, it's our understanding that over a period going forward, some of those poles will come down as all of the improvements are completed. So we're not sure what that number will be and which location the poles would be removed from, but what we see today is not necessarily what we're going to have for the long term.
Okay, will anybody from the audience speak on this issue?
Thanks.
I'm signing.
My name is Joe Hearn-Surk. I reside at 224 East Naperville Road, which is in the northeast acres area where the substation is located. I do appreciate the effort and support of the, and support the Village's efforts to improve the appearance of the Commonwealth Edison facility located on the southeast corner of Melrose and Cass. I would make an assumption, by the way, that this fence is going to be sufficiently set back that the sightline onto Chicago, onto Cass Avenue is not obstructed, nor the sightline from Cass onto Melrose Avenue. And I believe that was, Jill did clarify that point by showing me the drawing. The proposed fence extension screens some of the recently created unsightliness as a result of the improving, of improving the electrical service to Hinsdale, Westmont, and Clarendon Hills after recent power failures resulting from 40 years of neglect by Commonwealth Edison, but is neither what I would consider a permanent solution to either the aesthetic or the technical issues which need to be addressed. The building on the site has been allowed to deteriorate and the architectural design denigrated by crude repairs and modifications. That was a Art Deco-type building that is on that site that was actually the original substation a long time ago. If you've ever traveled through the town, and I've traveled through the town all my life, so for 62 years I've seen that building, and it was actually an attractive building at one time, and it contained all of the electrical, electrical facilities, and it's probably where the switching actually belongs. As both the resident and one of the, according to the 2011 annual report, one of the 125,000 excellent shareholders, I believe that the greater good of both the Village and the company would be served by placing the majority of the feeder lines, switches, and attendant equipment in the substation either within a building at ground level or an underground duct, and that would include particularly along Cass and Chicago avenues and Naperville Road. That is all part of this improvement which is going on, so it needs to be addressed, and I wanted to put that in the public statement. That would be a permanent improvement in the appearance, but more importantly, remove these critical lines from the physical dangers of storm damage, mechanical damage from vehicle accidents, particularly those located adjacent to the roadway along Cass Avenue, and from, as well as reduce other potential actions which may result in service disruption. The current fence is not an attractive installation, it's a slab of wall of boards 10 feet high of relatively crude construction, and does little to provide screening from the, from the poles because of their excessive height. And that's what I view that, I appreciate the Village doing it, and I go along with putting it up to hide it, but all of these facilities really do need to be put in a proper enclosure, and we need also, and I'm, you guys are aware, the zoning variances change and the requirements of building and such go on, and to the Village, and I'll make the statement also to the Village, asking them that they modify our village ordinances that such facilities be encouraged to be placed underground or mandated to be placed underground, because that's, that's where they belong. They belong in conduit along the roadway, and that is the way that this should be built for safety and for the appearance. Thank you.
Thank you to Jill and to Shannon, both for their assistance in preparing my materials.
Thank you.
At this point, we don't have any ability to make any of the suggestions that you're making.
No, I know that it's just stating, just for the public, I tend to be stating it to the Village Board.
Thank you.
If this matter comes before the Village Board, to ask them to address this, hopefully as one of the arguments we came up with, that we can then place on the requirements on the utility to act and conduct themselves in an appropriate manner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Either...
We were here for the safe concern, he said everything. He didn't have any prepared remarks, our greatest concern was how far the fence would come out toward both Cass.
They were not sworn in. They were not sworn in, they chose to sit back.
Come on up, it's okay.
Okay, here, let's do it real fast. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Would you please sign in your name, please?
I get all the time following him, he gets everything out, I don't get to say anything. I've accepted my position.
All right, come on back.
My name is Jason Fichtel, and I live on 27 Melrose Street in the Westmere Glen Townhome Association, which is immediately behind the Giant Power Station. Our concern was that the fence would block our access or our ability to see coming from Melrose onto Cass, which we use every single day to get to work, and it sounds like that's already been addressed in the plans.
Right, it'll be receded enough to where that site triangle is maintained.
The poles have already made it difficult, so we were worried about a fence making it even worse, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no further public comment, we'll close with a public comment. Let's go with the Commissioner Pill.
Thank you. Well, just a couple of things, this is really a no-win situation. We have a utility, and they work hard, I think, to incur our disdain. We can certainly see where they're well-represented, 100,000 employees, and we can't send somebody down here to talk to us. We're going to take an ugly situation, and we're going to make it just as ugly with an ugly fence, which is a continuation of an ugly fence around an ugly building, which is only going to partially cover some ugly poles. And they're going to do this whenever they feel like it, and they're going to go ahead and just continue to operate this way. The power in that northeast section where I own a home and a business has been horrendous. Thousands of dollars I've spent in repair, never once have I won a claim. It's a shame, and I think if we choose to vote no to this, they're going to go ahead and say, hey, you know what, we saved $5,000 in fencing costs, and that'll probably go to a bonus, because it certainly isn't going to the repair of infrastructure. It's been so neglected for so long at every single facet, rusting parts, lines coming down, arcing, sparking, instead of doing the job and putting it underground, we continue to replace it with crap up on these poles. It's just the way it is. I'll vote as the way that the group looks at this, because I feel that we're placed really in a no-win situation as far as supporting this fence. It's the lesser perhaps of evils, but these are really evils that we're looking at, and there's not much of a difference in it. That's basically all I have to say.
Commissioner Anton?
Two times the power went out, try six to eight times. My house, I lost meat in the refrigerator, my freezer, my freezer downstairs in my basement is open and dry. I'm using, I didn't trust it to put it back up, and I claimed you can't win a claim against them, you can't replace your meat. I put a generator on my house, a gas-driven generator, so, I don't know, it's, like you said, it's disheartening. I think we should put the fence on, though. Those poles are horrendous. I walk by, I want to climb a pole, I'm older, and what about a kid? A kid's going to want to climb the pole. Should put the fence up, and I agree with the gentleman who was up earlier, that was a nice building back in the day, even when I was younger, we were chosen, you know, a couple of years ago, and it was a nice building, and from what I understand, a lot of the stuff gets taken away and they never put it back in there, that's why we have failures. Yeah, I'm for the fence, they need to put it up. Not going to let them get away with that. Thanks.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No, I would echo statements of both previous Commissioners.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I feel they need to do something here, you know, as far as shielding it, it's not the best solution, but it's the only solution we have right now. So, I'm in favor of putting up the fence.
Fisher Fleet?
I'm in favor of putting up the fence.
Fisher Thomas?
I'm also, while disappointed that a representative could not be booked to come to a public hearing to put forth their desire to have it fixed, whatever extent that is, minimal, I'm in favor of the fence. And I hope they can, they're told in enough time that they can have a representative come before the trustees. It would be nice. That's all I have.
Shannon, as we discussed earlier, perhaps you can endeavor to persuade them to make a bit more attractive fence instead of a stockade, a separation of an inch between the boards. I also am in favor of trying to hide that. I'll call it an abortion, what they have up there, plain and simple. Greg described it far more eloquently than I could. If I were to describe it the way I feel, I'd be kicked off of here, so, we're trying. That's what I... But that's the only reason that I will vote to erect the fence. Sad situation. The only thing I can say is I have declined to accept my electric service from Commonwealth Edison. I might be a suggestion for other people. Okay, since we have a variance request for the construction of a 10-foot-tall solid fence in the front and side yard adjoining a street in the R4 General Residence District, may we have a reading of the findings of fact?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property is improved with an electrical substation adjacent to properties owned R4. An existing 10-foot fence partially screens this property, and the applicant seeks to extend this 10-foot fence at the request of the village to adequately screen surrounding properties from this utility use. The applicant cannot adequately screen its use from adjoining residential uses and yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. This request for a new fence and resulting variance was initiated by the village in order to screen and protect adjacent properties from this utility use. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property currently contains a 10-foot fence which partially screens this utility use. The applicant proposes to extend this 10-foot fence to provide additional screening for the benefit of the neighborhood.
Do you agree with these findings? Please raise your hand.
Begrudgingly.
It hurts, but we all agree. The findings of fact for a variance request are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning item 12-019, item A, a zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a 10-foot-tall solid fence in the front yard and side yard adjoining a street in the R4 General Residence District.
So moved.
Second. That's motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. May we have a question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And, did I call you? Commissioner Redd?
Chairman Richard? Yes. Shannon, do you think what it even paid is to perhaps have the village receive the monies that they may allocate for the fence, and we could put up a fence that we could design that might just be more attractive? Would that be possible?
I'm not sure if that maybe have some legal implications. My only thought is the consistency of what's up there already, so that's a question that maybe the group wants to discuss.
You know, when you have a toothache, do you keep trying to have another one?
I don't know if that's within our realm of possibility or not.
That fence is disgusting. In fact, the entire, the entire substation is disgusting. As Mr. Herncirk alluded to, I'm an electrician, I have built Commonwealth Edison high-voltage switch yards, and there would not be any trouble whatsoever for them to include or to encase all of that in a building at ground level, none whatsoever. It's a shame they choose to arbitrarily inflict this abomination upon us. Okay, next item on the agenda, Planning and Zoning 12-020, Village of Westmont regarding a zoning code text amendment as follows. A, amend Article IV, Appendix A, Section 4.05, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 11, to permit six-foot solid fences in the front yard and side yard adjoining a street under certain circumstances.
Okay, I'm back to the commission.
Sign in, please.
I'm back to the commission with fences again. Staff is requesting a text amendment to permit six-foot solid fences in the front and side yards adjoining a street in certain circumstances. As the summer has gone through, we've noticed a lot of permit requests for corner-side yard fences. In these instances, as you can see on the screen, the applicants have a unique circumstance where they're located on the corner, and their rear yard is considered more of our corner-side yard, so they're required to have fences that are 35 feet back, as you can see in the red line. This decreases a significant portion of their yard, and most of the applications have wanted their fence to meet up with the side of their house and then go back to the backyard. This seems to be reasonable when we've looked at it. We put several examples in your packet, again, with the red line showing where it's required to be, and then the yellow line showing where the residents would like their fence to be. And this just gives them more of an opportunity to use their rear yards. Some of the houses were built before the 35-foot setback was required, and so their houses actually already encroached into that yard anyway, so it makes sense that they would hook on to the back of their house and go back from there, which is how we propose the text amendment. If the fence is located behind the structure and does not create any line-of-sight issues or adverse impacts upon their neighbors, staff would then be allowed to allow it as right, rather than make the residents go for a variation.
Okay.
Okay.
Will anybody from the public speak on this issue? We'll close the public comment. Start with Commissioner Thomas, if you would, please.
Now, these, if I read this right, these situations would, staff decides whether you still need to come before us, or you're going to do an administrative?
Yes, if the text amendment were approved, if it met the new zoning requirement, staff would be able to administratively approve it. If it did not meet the requirements, it would still require a variation, and the Planning and Zoning Commission would then judge it on its merits.
And if the applicant would be taken care of in the office instead of coming before this board, that would save them what?
Financially?
$250.
Pardon me?
$250.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleet?
That's where my question was going.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I think it was very thoughtful of the staff to come in front of the commission and present this, because this is something that I have in the past wondered about every time these corner lots come in front of us. You know, I think it's a great idea, and I applaud you for it, so I have no concerns with it.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, not the corner lot, fences, but I agree, it would be a great idea.
Commissioner Anton?
I have a corner lot, and I'm now going to be in compliance. I love it. No, that's great, it's common sense, and I appreciate you guys doing it, for everybody.
Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, I think just to summarize what everybody said, anytime we can make it easier for the residents of our town to go ahead and do something that promotes and makes their home safer and better-looking and increases its value, and not have to charge them to do that in terms of a variance and things like that, and let them deal with our wonderful staff, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think it's a win-win across the board.
Okay, the only question I have is, the way this is written, in the front yard and side yard adjoining a street under certain circumstances, we are not identifying what these circumstances are. All of the illustrations I've seen here, for the most part, are with corner lots, but there's no delineation that this would only be to corner lots.
In the...
Under, if I may finish.
I'm sorry.
So, under the wording of this, someone could come in, any house in the middle of a block, and say, I want a solid six-foot fence in my front yard.
The proposed text amendment is within the general information on accessory structures in the zoning ordinance, so if you flip through into the packet, there's the boxes, and the italicized print, I'll just, you know, read the amendment. Fences of no more than six feet in height are permitted within a side yard adjoining a street if the fence is located behind the structure and does not create any line-of-sight issues or adverse impact on adjacent neighbors. So, those were the conditions that were recommended that the administrative waiver would be possible under.
So, it doesn't stand alone.
Okay, so that does not stand alone? Okay, okay.
Right.
Well, you've answered my question. You thought that out very well, I've got to compliment you.
Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning item 12-020, item A, amend Article IV, Appendix A, Section 4.05, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 11, to permit six-foot solid fences in the front yard and side yard adjoining a street under certain circumstances. So moved. Second. Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, I believe I heard. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Staff have anything?
Just one quick item. I passed around a reminder about the Open Meetings Act training. The clerk's office, I believe, has contacted all of the commission members previously, so for those that have not yet completed it, the handout tonight has the link to the website. I overheard someone indicating they may have had some trouble with it. If you have experienced any trouble whatsoever, go ahead and contact Deputy Clerk Carrie K. Mack in the clerk's office. His phone number is on the second page of the handout, and that needs to be completed. We have plenty of time, January 1st of next year. That's all.
Have contacted him, he's not that much help.
Uh-oh.
Anyhow.
This increases my pay by how much?
But we appreciate you very much.
Now, since we are all members of the sitting board right now, we have, from my understanding, until January at this time, newly-appointed people would have 30 days, I believe.
Ninety.
Ninety days?
More than that, yeah.
Sixty or ninety?
Yeah.
Anything further? Any commissioners? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion, roll call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Commissioner Thomas, if you need help with that, I'll help you out.